in in short order and then we have two public hearings one posted for seven thirty and one for seven forty-five and we will need to take those at the times that they are posted so if we have other things that we need to pause so that we can open those we will. Members of the public who are interested in speaking in either of those public hearings there are sign up sheets on the table by the window to my right and you can sign up for the appropriate public hearing at any point we'll take public speakers as they're signed up and then we've got some routine business to take care of we'll take a break for some subcommittee work come back to finish it all up so with that I'll officially call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council Tuesday April twenty-second twenty-twenty-five seven o'clock PM Ms Kent will you please call the roll? Bowen Crowley Feldman Hausman Rotundo Spang St Hilaire Sweeney and Flowers here. Thank you Ms Kent uh Counselor Spang will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Counselor Spang so I mentioned we do have Kim in the BevCam booth streaming the meeting and we appreciate that as always our partners at BevCam making sure that folks at home can follow our meetings and follow them uh from a place and time that is convenient for you I also wanted to mention before we jump into the rest of the meeting that we do have some members of our city staff here with us we have our fire chief uh Chief O'Connor thank you so much for being here and we also have Brian Ailes our city finance director we have Jean Delios from the community preservation committee and Jerry Perry our city council budget analyst is here with us as well thank you all for being here with us this evening and with that I believe we'll go right to our resolution that we have at the beginning Counselor Rotundo I'd invite you to go to the podium for order one forty-one this is a resolution for Olive Bocia's one-hundredth birthday.
How to read this. Thank you Madam President it's my pleasure to be able to read this resolution honoring Ms Olive Bocia's one-hundredth birthday did I say her name correctly?
Osha.
Osha my apologies my Italians off whereas the city of Beverly proudly recognizes and honors Ms Olive on the momentous occasion of her one-hundredth birthday on March twentieth two thousand twenty-five and whereas Ms Olive has been an integral part of Beverly's cultural and educational fabric dedicating her life to the arts education and the enrichment of generations of children and families and whereas Olive's mother Mary Manuel Mitchell founded Mitchell's Dance Studio in nineteen thirty-two and alongside her mother and brother Alvin Mitchell Ms Olive contributed to the studio's rich history performing with the Manuel's black and white orchestra and ensuring that the studios thrived for decades and whereas her talent and dedication have been the backbone of Mitchell's Dance Studio where she has worked tirelessly behind the scenes crafting costumes designing sets and sharing her expertise to carry on the studio's legacy and whereas beyond the arts Ms Olive's contribution to education as a preschool teacher at Mitchell's Rhythm Preschool Kindergarten in the nineteen forties helped shape the lives of many Beverly children instilling them a love of learning and creativity and whereas her unwavering commitment extended to the family's beloved summer camp which began in Essex in nineteen forty-five and later moved to Beverly where it served the community until two thousand fourteen with Ms Olive ensuring that every detail from clean facilities to the warm and welcoming atmosphere were meticulously attended and whereas Olive's humility kindness dedication to her family community and the arts have left an inevitable mark on Beverly touching countless lives and inspiring future generations now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Michael Cahill and the Beverly City Council do hereby extend their deepest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Ms Olive on her one-hundredth birthday celebrating her lifetime of contributions and the lasting legacy she has created and that the city clerk spread a copy of this resolution upon the city records as a testament to Ms Olive's extraordinary impact and that a copy be presented to her in recognition of this historic milestone and it's signed by all city councillors as well as Mayor Michael Cahill so will you please present this to me? Did you want to say anything on her behalf? Did you want to say anything on her behalf?
She really said thank you to everybody but she did say one thing she hopes she lives long enough to go over the Rylside Bridge.
Madam President can we take a quick picture as requested by Ms Hausman?
Of of course we can.
Thank you.
Please.
Would you like to go up there?
Oh yeah let's go up.
Madam President would you mind if they came up to the?
I would not what if what if we officially vote on this and then take a recess and we'll do some pictures as well um we'll just make it official I'd entertain a motion councillors to officially approve order one forty-one that is the resolution we just heard celebrating Olive Bocia's one-hundredth birthday. All those in favor? That carries six zero and uh with great joy that is officially approved congratulations so thankful to Olive's family for being here and Olive if you're watching happy birthday. And we hope you get to go over that bridge too the Rylside one uh so I would entertain a motion for a five-minute recess councillors? All those in favor? Thank you very much six zero we'll be back in five minutes we'll do some pictures thank you. Thank you everyone we'll call the city council back to order and again uh thank you and congratulations to Olive on her one-hundredth birthday but not just that we heard some of the many ways that Olive Bocia has touched families children's lives and the very fabric of our community here in Beverly throughout her life and so we not only celebrate her birthday but really thank you Olive for all that you've done for this community and for the people who live here Counselor Rotundo thank you for helping us to celebrate Olive that way so we do have two resident speakers who have signed up to speak these are spots that are available at any of our regular city council meetings there are five spots in total available and they are for up to three minutes each per speaker and those can be signed up for by contacting the city clerk's office no later than nine thirty AM the morning of the meeting and they are first come first served and so today we have Charles Cumberbatch signed up to speak um Charles no Mr Cumberbatch okay well we'll give it a moment and Mr Cumberbatch may be along uh our second speaker who has signed up to speak is Paul Hanson Metev and so Mr Hanson Metev you can come to the podium you'll have up to three minutes Counselor Rotundo we'll keep the time we like to do that just to ensure that everybody has the same amount of time and it's equitable for all speakers when you hear the timer go off if you would draw your remarks to a close at that time and if you would please begin with your name and address for the record thank you.
Good evening now as before my name is Paul Hanson Metev at twenty-five Vine Street in Ward Six Precinct One as all of you are aware Pope Francis has passed just this Sunday he had a short interlude with the Vice President of the United States J.D Vance and also gave an Easter message in which he declared once again the importance for peace in particular with the matters of Ukraine and of course Gaza Francis was born in nineteen thirty-five in Argentina to two parents who had immigrated from Italy a fate that was shared with many residents or descendants of people here in Beverly Francis was ordained and served in the Jesuit Order considered the most well-educated of the different Catholic Orders for male priests he also lived in a society that was war-torn and suffered from disappearances and such much like the fascist Italy from which his parents were no longer living our government has had a role in these matters particularly here in this hemisphere and this Francis was keenly aware of in light of the remarks he made on the last day of his life he was a controversial figure in many ways regarding for instance the ordination of female priests the church's role regarding the sexual molestation and abuse of children and also in many ways he was progressive and revolutionary I'm speaking to you just briefly today also because I attended um Saint Mary's Star of the Sea here in Beverly for nine years and many of the Roman Catholic sisters who provided instruction were of the same generation as Francis if they were still living would be in their late eighties or early nineties so in a sense I want to acknowledge that in honor of them the school sisters and sisters of Notre Dame taught me Sister Martha Keenan and Sister Grace Kenning Sister Mary O'Connor and those sisters who still kept their given names but lastly by a chain chance occurrence yesterday on Democracy Now Amy Goodman interviewed Reverend Munter Isaac the author of the book Christ in the Rubble which is making its rounds here in Beverly and he noted how Francis however controversial chose to live out his understanding of the gospel and acknowledged cruelty and injustice wherever we may find it thank you kindly.
Thank you Mr Hanson Metev thank you for your time so Mr Cumberbatch I don't believe is here so we'll go on to some of our regular business before we circle back for our seven thirty posted public hearing and just a reminder for those watching or those here uh if you are intending to speak in one of the two public hearings on the topics being considered you can sign up on the sign up sheet on the table by the window and we'll take those speakers in those hearings uh in the order that they are signed up so councillors we have one set of meeting minutes that we can approve this evening this is the set of minutes from the regular city council meeting from April seventh twenty twenty-five is there a motion to approve? All those in favor? Carry six. Thank you uh that carries five zero with one abstention Ms Kent let's go to communications from his honor the mayor please.
Order number one forty-two a twelve thousand five hundred dollar firefighter safety equipment grant from EOPSS and DFS to be used to purchase gloves helmets hoods turnout gear and a thermal imager for the Beverly Fire Department.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order number one forty-three a seven thousand two hundred dollar student awareness grant and a two thousand six hundred dollar senior safe grant from EOPSS and DFS to be used for public fire and life safety initiatives in our community.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order number one forty-four an appointment for Todd Denstot to serve on the Beverly Airport Commission.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services.
Order one forty-five an appointment for Judy Ashkanaz to serve on the planning board.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs. Let's go to communications from other city officers and boards please.
Order number one forty-six from the city clerk a request for approval to assign police details at six polling locations for the twenty twenty-five elections.
Councillors we can approve that on the floor is there an order to approve order one forty-six? Yeah you could recuse yourself for both Counselor Bowen thank you.
Uh sorry it's for all elections so you guys would all recuse yourselves.
Uh Counselor Hausman I think I heard a so moved from you. Great. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That carries six zero and now Counselor Bowen if yes if you'd like to recuse yourself for this one uh is there oh wait a second sorry Counselor Bowen I didn't mean to rush you a lot of ground to cover.
Order one forty-seven from the city clerk a request for approval of the warrant for the special state election to be held on May thirteenth twenty twenty-five.
Thank you councillors is there a motion to approve order one forty-seven? Any further discussion? All those in favor? That carries five zero thank you and Mr Perry yes thank you don't mind bringing Counselor Bowen back thank you very much uh Ms Kent?
Order one forty-eight from the city clerk a renewal application for a secondhand junk deal license for Lena Narazoni Gallery at one thirty Cabot Street Unit Two.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order one forty-nine from the city clerk a renewal of flammable storage license for North Atlantic Air Lessee at forty-seven LP Henderson Road.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order one fifty and one fifty-one from the city clerk renewal applications for ice cream truck vendor permits.
Please refer both orders to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order one fifty-two from President Flowers a reappointment for Jordan Stuck to serve on the Clean Energy Board.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services.
Order number one fifty-three from Counselor Hausman an appointment for Kiara Fabrizia to serve on the Clean Energy Advisory Committee.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services as well let's go to communications applications and petitions.
Order one fifty-four from Brian Redolfo the executive director a request for a waiver of the city ordinance chapter one thirteen dash two prohibiting possession of alcohol on a public way or in public spaces.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order one fifty-five from KP Law a sickly buyback for department heads.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs as well let's go to motions and orders please Ms Kent and this is order one oh seven which is available for a first vote this evening.
Order one oh seven propose amendment to chapter two seventy vehicles and traffic as follows amend the following ordinance to remove the stricken language and add the language as follows section two seventy dash forty-one parking prohibited at all times Herrick Street north from Soya Road to three twenty-five feet southwest Herrick Street both from Soya Road to Brimble Avenue Herrick Street south from Soya Road to Ames Street section two seventy dash forty-three parking prohibited during certain hours on Herrick Street north from Cabot Street to three hundred and twenty-five feet southeast of Soya Road parking by permit only during activities at the Beverly High School forty field Herrick Street south from five Herrick Street to thirty-five Herrick Street parking by permit only during activities at the Beverly High School forty field and that was in the newspaper on April twenty-third.
Thank you Ms Kent is there?
Twenty-third yeah tomorrow.
Is there a motion to approve order one oh seven this is for a first vote? Is there any discussion at this time? Counselor Bowen.
Thank you I know it's just a first vote but just for clarification do we have any plans for a specific conversation on any recommendations from parking and traffic or from Counselor Crowley at a future meeting or is the plan to do those discussions on our own and be prepared for a vote at the next opportunity?
I would say certainly from Counselor Crowley I would expect at the next meeting I I have not heard that there is any specific recommendation from parking and traffic but we could certainly ask for that for before the next meeting is there any other discussion? Okay we'll take care of that good reminder Counselor Bowen and uh so we have a motion and a second again this is for a first vote order one oh seven is not available for final passage until our next meeting all those in favor? All those opposed? Sorry Counselor Spang are you opposed? Okay just didn't want to miscount you thank you uh so that carries five one on this first vote thank you we have a little bit of time before our posted public hearing so we could take a brief break for some subcommittee work and we'll see if some committees can take care of a few items on their agenda is there a motion to take a break for subcommittee work until seven thirty? Uh all those in favor? That carries six zero let's have uh Finance and Property stay here Legal Affairs in the committee room and Public Services in the hall please and councillors if you would be back for seven thirty so we can take that public hearing then we'll resume subcommittee work after thank you.
Call to order the Committee on Finance and Property looks like it's just the two of us.
Just the two of us.
We just referred tonight two orders number one forty-one and one forty-three both are grants um for the fire department. We're lucky to have the chief with us tonight um can you tell us about um these two grants?
It was a chief yeah sorry chief.
Okay great.
The second one is the last this is the last year of the five-day grant cycle.
For equipment um they've been given out roughly we've been getting twenty-five thousand dollars a year for um turnout gear is typically what we end up spending it for um at the end of the cycle they had some leftover money so this is actually the round two of this fiscal year that's coming out it has to be spent by um June thirtieth so we're gonna get a camera for a truck that we have coming at the end of the year and and uh some some other equipment uh personal protective equipment with that.
Now chief do they um just sort of zivvy it up or do we have to apply for these separately?
So we do we apply for them every year we get there's an application process um we're hoping that that will be renewed for the next five years because it's it's a fair amount of money for us for equipment uh and pretty much every other department across the state too so we we are hoping it comes back uh next fiscal year um but yes so we we did apply for it and what you see there is the equipment that was approved and uh as soon as we get it signed we'll start uh getting some of that light up.
Okay great thank you chief.
You're welcome.
Madam President any questions or comments?
You sort of touched on it chief I was just curious I looking at the list of approved equipment and as you said this is a significant amount of money that allows us to get this protective equipment and gear for firefighters I was just curious if you could I think you've shared with us before but this kind of turnout gear the things that they need when they're working a fire how about how often does it need to be replaced to keep them safe?
So if you look at the standard the the gear is good for ten years but we typically don't get ten years out of what we do is everybody gets two sets um we have right now about thirty-six sets that are on their tenth year of life as a backup set of gear um everybody uses it different we have three different stations we have a whole bunch of guys that that all wear um and some sees more some see more action than others but ten years is the limit for the gear um so we'll we'll replace as as many sets as we can throughout the year and this is a good way for us to stay stay up on top of it so.
That's great I appreciate that very much and I was just thinking obviously it'd be really important for us to keep keep that gear current and protective and so having these grants is is huge so thanks for your work on applying.
It's about four thousand dollars a set now for for turnout gear.
Oh wow okay thank you.
Thank you chief um I guess without further ado we can go ahead and take these up um I guess we'll act on order one forty-two first this is a a grant for twelve thousand five hundred dollars uh this is for the turnout gear for the Beverly Fire Department do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All second and all in favor is approved two to zero thank you.
Thank you.
Uh and then we'll take up the the next order one forty-three this is a grant for uh total of nine thousand eight hundred dollars uh as the chief indicated for our seniors in in schools uh education programs um I would entertain a motion that we approve order one forty-three.
So moved.
All second uh and all those in favor aye that is also approved two to zero so I believe that concludes our agenda for Finance and Property so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second all in favor aye thank you.
Thank you Mr Chair. Thank you everyone call the full council back to order and I know that subcommittees do still have work to do so we will go back into subcommittee for some additional work. so we will go back into subcommittee for some additional work. But we will take our two public hearings at this time, the first of which is a public hearing on Order 108. This is posted for 7:30 PM. And again, I'll mention that there are sign-up sheets for these public hearings on the table by the window to my right. And public speakers interested in speaking on one or the other of these topics can sign up on the appropriate sign-up sheet. And we'll take those speakers in the order that they are signed up. So we'll begin by officially opening the posted public hearing on Order 108. Ms. Kent?
Order 108, the City of Beverly ordered that the City Council, the City of Beverly, hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, at 7:30 PM at 191 Cabot Street, Third Floor, Council Chambers, relative to a transfer request of $285,000 into the Fire Department budget to fund costs with recently agreed MOA between the City of Beverly and the Firefighters Union. This was in the newspaper on April 11th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. Mr. Ailes, I see you're at the podium and ready to kick things off, so we'll turn things over to you to get us started. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Good evening, councilors. Before you this evening is a request, not that dissimilar from others you've received this fiscal year regarding the settlement of what is the last of the city side contracts. This represents, or covers, I should say, all the firefighters, both the firefighters and as well as the superior officers over in the Fire Department. The request is for $285,000. And the contract or the MOA that was attached to this communication from the mayor covers the terms of FY '25 through FY '27, which we're currently in FY '25. So this transfer will cover costs retro back to July 1 of this fiscal year. We're looking to two areas within the budget to transfer monies from, the first of which is a reserve for union negotiations. And we're looking to transfer $153,038 from that reserve. That will bring the balance in that reserve down to zero. And then we're also recommending that we transfer the additional $131,062 from the Reserve for Unforeseen, which currently is at $250,000, so this would reduce it by that amount. Happy to answer any questions, as well as I'm here with Chief O'Connor, as well as Jesse Dole, the city solicitor, who was involved in a lot of the negotiations that went along with this MOA. So we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ailes. And yes, I should mention that in addition to Mr. Dole being here, Bethel Nixon, our assistant city solicitor, they're both here with us this evening. Thank you, Mr. Dole, Ms. Old Nixon, for joining us. And thank you again, Chief O'Connor, for being with us as well. Councilors, are there questions for Mr. Ailes or for any of the folks here before we jump to Mr. Perry as well? I know you're ready, Mr. Perry, but any questions initially? Councilor Hausmann? I can't tell if you're trying...
I just wanted to hear from Mr. Perry.
Oh, all right. Mr. Perry? Would you be so kind? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Council. Thank you, Councilor Hausmann. He wants to hear from me. That's nice. So, any event, I wrote to you last week about the memo, my memo to you about the contract. This contract is pretty much similar in nature to like the police and the library, with some variations depending upon the discipline of the work involved. But they're pretty consistent with the other contracts. It's a three-year contract. I gave you the bullets there. You can see it if you have it on your computers or in your memo there. We will, as Mr. Ailes indicated, we will deplete the Reserve for Union Negotiations. There'll be no more money, but we're done with that. There will be remaining in the Reserve for unforeseen $118,038. That's how we have left. So we're going to need some of that money for things like, we have a deficit with snow and ice and things of that nature. But Mr. Ailes is working on that, and we've had some conversations. Bottom line to it, Madam President, members of the Council, I recommend adoption of the proposal. We have the money there. It's consistent with the other contracts. I think it's the appropriate thing to do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perry. Councilors, are there any questions that you have at this time? Councilor Bowen?
Thank you. I was just hoping to hear more, maybe from Chief O'Connor or others, about the impacts of the transition from the National Fire Incident Reporting System to National Emergency Response Information System and any other elements of this contract negotiation that are about sort of compensating how the role is changing over time.
Thank you, Councilor. Thank you, Chief.
So as far as the incident reporting goes, that's going to be a change that was, it's required this year. We report through National Fire Incident Reporting System right now. It's been there for 40 years, somewhat. It's not changed in that timeframe. It's outdated. It's inadequate. It's tough to pull information from. The new NARIS system is going to have better reporting for us so that we can get more detailed information about what goes in. It is going to be a little bit of a different workload for the folks that are putting that information in. So we're going to make sure that they're getting that compensation for that. That's the first part of that. As far as anything else, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just whether there were other, I noticed there were other adjustments around EMS training and sort of bringing up to speed, sort of matching what the role is today and making sure that compensation is tied to all the different roles that our firefighters play.
That's right. I'm sorry. So the EMS role is constantly evolving, too. One of the big things for us is that we're not a transporting ambulance, but we want to make sure that we're accurately documenting our patient care reports. So for years, we were with a system that didn't really give us the ability to properly do that. We have a system that gives us the ability to properly do that now. But again, we're going to be putting more information. We're going to be requiring more information be put into the system, which will in turn allow us to get better information out of the system on the medical side of that as well. So that's the other big part that you see in there.
Thank you, Councilor. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Councilors, Councilor Hausmann?
Yeah, just a follow-up question with Mr. Perry, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Perry, please. Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Perry, Reserve for Unforeseen, you mentioned snow and ice. If we take this amount of money out, you're recommending that we have sufficient reserves in Reserve for Unforeseen? I mean, if you could elaborate on that a little bit.
No, we won't have enough. We will not have sufficient funds for Reserve for Unforeseen. But Mr. Ailes is scrubbing those accounts. We'll be looking at various other line items that may have some funds left over. I'm confident he'll come up with a good proposal. But this would be one area we could use. But the bottom line to it, we'll have to be looking at other line items or other funding mechanisms to take care of that. Maybe a few other minor deficits on the books.
So what are the, in addition to this, the demands on the Reserve for Unforeseen that would cause us to not be able to tap it anymore, that would use it all up?
Yeah, I mean, my expect, I believe I wrote to you a couple weeks ago about the third quarter budget to actuals. I think it's approximately $300,000 in snow and ice that were in deficit. So we have to cover that. Well, I don't know. I don't want to speak for the mayor or the finance director. They certainly could take the $118 left over to go towards that. Then they'll be looking to other funds or other line items, I should say, to, for that. Plus, there's some issues. We're being a little cognizant of police overtime, the fire chief, there he is. We talked a little bit about that. He thinks he's going to get through, but he's got some, he has some sick firefighters. That could be an issue. So we won't know really till June where we're really at with all this stuff. But as you know, Councilor, one of the things we have to do, we want to make sure we eliminate deficits on the budget because if they're there on June 30th, it'll be a reduction of free cash. And we don't want to do that. But the finance director's on top of it. He certainly could speak to it if he wishes. But I'm confident we'll come up with something. But I just bring this to your attention, that the rest of that money probably would go towards some of these deficits.
If I may, so would free cash be a potential source of funding?
Sure, free cash could legally, free cash is an option. It would conform, probably would conform to our policies, too. You know, we could discuss that. I'd prefer not to. I'd rather see him do from existing line items. But again, we have to deal with whatever the deficits are. There's a little perspective. We know some of it, but we don't know all of it yet. We'll know more hopefully the end of May, early June. And then I'm sure the mayor and the finance director will come to you to try to clean up those records. I did have, just so you know, a meeting with both Mr. Ailes and Ms. Arglewetz on this very issue. I think it was Tuesday, I was here on the bill last Tuesday. We sat, we went through the MUNA system. We're kind of looking at a lot of things. So we're on top of it, but something will be coming. We just haven't identified exactly. We got to wait a few more weeks to see where we're going to be.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor St. Hilaire, did I see your hand?
Yeah, I just wanted to take an opportunity to talk on the Reserve for Unforeseen, which is something I routinely mention during our budget hearings every year. And, you know, I think this is a little off-topic, but to your point, I mean, the issue isn't that we don't have enough in unforeseen. It's we don't have enough in the snow and ice budget, right? And I think, you know, one of the things I'm looking at here is from last year. In May, we got a request, end-of-year transfers. Big source of that, every year is the unforeseen. And there's always things we could spend it on. So I guess for me, the question is, is that the right amount in there to begin with? But we can talk about more during the budget process, I guess.
Thank you, Councilor. There is one member of the public signed up to speak in this public hearing. Brian Riddle.
Madam President, I apologize. I just signed in there. In my city, I previously resided all on attendance.
Oh, okay.
So I just signed.
No apology needed, and thank you for your attention to detail about making sure that you were signed in appropriately. We appreciate, appreciate. Thanks for joining us. Councilors, are there any other questions or comments in this public hearing at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this public hearing and refer that back to the Committee on Finance and Property for further action this evening. And we'll go to our next public hearing. This is on Order 118. And Ms. Kent, I'll read the order, and that will bring us to 7:45.
Order 118, City of Beverly ordered that the City Council, the City of Beverly, hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, at 7:45 PM at 191 Cabot Street, Third Floor, Council Chambers, relative to the Community Preservation Committee's 12th Round CPA Project Funding Recommendations. This is in the paper on April 11th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. I know that we have Derek Beckwith from the CPC Committee at the podium and ready to get things started. So, Mr. Beckwith, thank you very much. We'll turn things over to you to get things going.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you very much, councilors. It's a pleasure to be back in front of you again with good news from the Community Preservation Committee. I realize that in the times I've talked, I haven't said their names out loud during these meetings so that everyone watching on BEV CAM can actually understand that people were putting in hours and hours and hours of work on the committee. Vice Chairman Robert Buxbaum, members Christie Edwards, David Urshin, Jamie Jamison, Suzanne Lamont, Nancy Marino, and Heather Richter. I say greetings and bring greetings from them as well. We just wrapped up our evaluation of Round 12 of the CPC, of the CPA funding for the city and have decided in, after due diligence and multiple meetings with the project applicants, et cetera, to recommend eight different projects. They fall into two buckets. We sent more than enough material, I think. We try not to be too weighty with this, describing each one of the projects in detail. I'll just give very quick highlights. We have four recreation projects totaling $430,334.50. One for the Abbott Street Right of Way project, which, if you're familiar with, and I know that you are, the public way near the waterfront at Abbott and Lothrup. This project is going to examine the ability or what it will take to design and develop for the citizens of Beverly a pocket park in that area using that. So we think it's a very exciting project. There are several other locations in the city that this may be able to transfer to in terms of a good model for how to approach it. There were all sorts of different complications with Right of Way and easements and things like that. So the city solicitor's office has actually been involved. The engineering department has been involved to help the applicant. I have to make sure I have the applicant name correctly. Robin Luna Whitman, who has a deep background in public planning and really spearheaded a lot of the research for this. The, this is a $56,490 piece of the puzzle in terms of our recreation recommendations to you. This project, in our conditions, in approving the project, recommending it to you, and in any memorandum of understanding we have, would actually only be funded and move forward after the City Council and the City Solicitor's Office and Engineering Department is working on this now, makes a determination to permanently dedicate this space as recreational space because this is under the recreation category. So you'll have a separate proposal that'll come from the city on that. So anyway, it's something that we've tried in different ways to be able to look at developing pocket parks for the benefit of citizens and the enjoyment of the waterfront. This may be a model that we can use to help map that out in the future for others. So it's a pretty exciting, innovative project. Additionally, we have a, the Balch Playground Renovation Project, which is, we detail it is a $150,000 project, and it will really bring, replace all sorts of equipment for this park that's adjacent to a, let me pull up my note here. I wanted to touch base on a couple of these things. An environmental justice area and is is used by many, many people from all across the city. So it's in need of repair. And it's not just repair or maintenance. This is a total renovation of the park. And Holcroft Park Splash Pad, which is a $100,000 project, is bringing really a completely new entertainment and enjoyment, especially during hot days for the youth and probably a few senior citizens like myself who want to get down and cool off and have fun and enjoy our city. So that is also located in one of the two environmental justice projects, our neighborhoods in Beverly. And also Gillis Park Pavilion, which was proposed. The project applicant is friends of Gillis Park, and they worked very diligently to get involved in really doing a lot of work in the area. And their project here is to build a pavilion, which will provide much-needed shade and a place for parties, enjoyment in different ways that is not available right now at the park. So those are the recreation. And then we have four historic resources projects. The Cabot House Porticoes Project, which will renovate and protect under historic preservation. The Cabot House has two different porticoes. There's additional funding for it, contributing to what our project budget recommendation is, including insurance money because one of the columns actually was damaged by fire. So that's coming into the mix as well to preserve this very historic house or property for the future. And additionally, the final phase of the Beverly Cemetery Fence Project, which the Beverly Farms Improvement Society has been working on for years and contributing tens and tens of thousands of dollars to make possible. And this is the additional money for the final phase so we can actually get it done and wrap it up with this final bit of funding. And then two more projects. One is $25,000 and change to the YMCA to help them in their renovation and restoration of the Ten-Futer Shoe Shop on Essex Street, a historic building that harkens to our city's historic past. And so that's a really interesting project that's going to involve having the property available for teachers to bring students to, for the children who go to the YMCA, et cetera, et cetera. So it's also an educational opportunity. And the restoration of the Rose Window at the Cabot Performing Arts Center. You remember that you fund... You remember that you funded in the past the restoration of the rose window in the lobby as part of the big restoration at the Cabot, on the internal part of it. So everyone who's inside the Cabot can now see the historic window going back to the early 1900s. This will make it available for everyone to see going by, because this is part of the renovation of the outside of the Cabot. So those are, that's a quick recap of our eight projects. And our recommended amount for Round 12 is $636,858.50. We have a balance of $1.7 million in our fund after this round. This year, including the out-of-cycle projects that you approved back in December, we're spending $1,022,743.50 of taxpayers' hard-earned money and that we're able to have as part of the CPA, thanks to the 1% assessment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beckwith. That was a very thorough and very helpful overview of the projects and the information, as you mentioned, that we've been sent to be able to look over. Counselors, are there questions as we dig into this for Mr. Beckwith or others? Counselor Hausmann?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Beckwith. Thank you, Council President. Of the, I'm just interested in which of these requests and applications have matching funds? You mentioned the Cabot House Portico, the Cemetery Fence, I gather. I gather YMCA also has, is contributing some funds as well to this?
That's correct.
And what about the Cabot Rose Window?
The Cabot, overall budget for the Cabot, hold on, is, this is part of a $3.685 million renovation.
So there's definitely a match.
So, yeah, it's pretty hefty. And the other thing with that is that as we had, when the renovation of the lobby took place, we'll have a clawback in place, because it is a non-city, private, nonprofit. So that's what we typically have as part of it, so.
As part of the MOU, you mean?
Yeah, as part of the MOU.
And then following, continuing on the recreation-related projects, some of these are for city properties, I guess all of them are. So am I correct in assuming that there is no matching funds?
No, there are some. I'll quickly look at it. For the, for the Friends of Gillis Park, there is not, okay? But the city is, at the same time, undergoing other projects at the park. They're redoing the entranceway, et cetera. The pavilion is going to be basically kitty-cornered from the entrance towards the water, the back of the park, I guess you'd say the back. And so the city is putting money and working on a different part of the park at the same time. So that's one. In terms of the Holcroft Park, the City of Beverly is doing utility work, and Lynch Park has $10,000, Lynch Foundation has $10,000 contribution to that, and $15,000 in other private donations are also going into it. And the Balch Playground Project has $10,000 from the Lynch Foundation. And the Beverly Farms Cemetery Fence, just to make mention of it, the first phase of the project was done entirely by the Beverly Farms Improvement Society for $67,000, I think it was, or no, $36,000 of their own money. And then in the next phase, the Improvement Society raised $67,000 plus for that. And so they made very substantial contributions.
And the Abbott Street Right-of-Way, I assume, that's still in progress, but probably no matching funds.
No matching funds at this point.
Okay. All right, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor St. Hilaire.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to comment on a couple of the proposals and thank you, Mr. Beckwith, for the thorough introduction. In particular, the Farm Cemetery Project, I know has been a sort of a labor of love for Mary McCaffrey and the Beverly Farms Improvement Society. It does have broad support in the community, and the new sections look great. It'll be nice to see this completed. So thank you for your continued support of that project. And then noticed former Council President, Mr. Flaherty, here as well from the YMCA. And I just wanted to thank the Y and also the committee for the support of the preservation of the Ten-Futer Shoe Shop. I had heard from some folks in the neighborhood who really felt that was important to preserve, and also some folks from the Historic District Commission. So really appreciate the support on that as well. So thank you, Tim, and the Y, and thank you to the committee. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor St. Hilaire, beat me to it, but nice to see you back here, former Counselor Flaherty, in your new role, your current community role at the Y. Thanks for being with us. Are there other questions from the council? Mr. Perry, I don't know if there is anything that you wanted to weigh in on this one?
Traditionally, I don't weigh in. I can just tell you that it's a policy decision from them, if you agree with. There is sufficient funds. I guess that's the biggest thing I'd weigh in, and it's certainly your call. I don't have any, I have no issues whatsoever with the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. There are no members of the public signed up on the Senate sheet, I don't believe, but Ms. Kent's just going to double-check. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Beckwith. With that, I will close this public hearing, refer it back to the Committee on Finance and Property for further action on that this evening. And we are back to the point where we can resume some subcommittee work. So Counselors, I would entertain a motion to take a brief break to wrap up our subcommittee work. All those in favor? Carrie, six zero. We'll pick up in the same locations, Finance and Property here in Council Chamber, Legal Affairs in the Committee Room, and Public Services in the Hall. And if there are more substantive issues than we can take care of in this break, we'll schedule those for some subcommittees. Thank you.
So we have two items on our agenda. Order 108 on the Fire Department memorandum of understanding, and then Order 118 on the CPC recommendations. Our two public hearings for tonight. I guess we'll start with Order 108. I guess I would entertain a motion to approve Order 108.
So moved.
Any further questions or comments? No? Okay, all in favor? Aye, that is approved, two to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next order is Order 118. It's the 12th round of CPA project funding recommendations that we just heard about tonight from Mr. Beckwith. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Any further, I'll second. Any further comments or questions? Go ahead.
I don't want to belabor the point. I think other Counselors have sort of mentioned it. I think, I always feel that we get a great presentation from the CPC, appreciate the projects coming forward. This particular group of eight, I feel like are all extremely strong, needed projects. I'm excited to see particularly Balch Playground and Holcroft Park. I appreciate those being in the mix. Gillis Park as well, I know the Friends of Gillis Park have worked hard in the Gillis Park area, but I'm thinking about Balch and Holcroft and just knowing that they are perks that are, their equipment is aging, they're well-used playgrounds, so appreciate that we have the opportunity to support some of that here.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
And I guess, Mr. Beckwith, while you are here, I did have a couple additional questions. And these are my two questions I sort of have every year, and I guess one is, how do you see the pipeline for these sort of projects? I was kind of encouraged to see the number of projects brought forward. I know there's, it's kind of gone up and down over the years. How do you see that? And what is your next step in terms of finding new projects? How does the committee go about that?
Well, the open space projects, just looking at the buckets that they come in, those are fewer and further between, but they're big-ticket items. So not quite sure when that's going to happen. But there will be one. In terms of housing, you know, we, again, those are the same way. And right now, I mean, Anchor Point is just winding up, Briscoe, so we'll see what the next one is. Don't know what that pipeline is. But there's never a shortage of recreation, and there's also not one, a shortage for historic preservation. So expect that pipeline will continue to flow. The other thing is that right now, we do have the housing, we have an innovative housing program going right now, and that's the Critical Repair Program that Habitat for Humanity had. I'd like to see, personally, would like to see more housing projects, perhaps in and around the ADA law that we have now, the, not ADA, the Accessory Dwelling Unit, ADU. Because, you know, maybe there's something there that can be done to leverage funds, you know, for deed restrictions, if someone wants to do something but can't quite afford it, whether or not we have some sort of assistance program for people to be able to do that and to put affordable housing, you know, in more neighborhoods. But I think that we have, while we have still $1.7 million, I think that that money can go pretty quickly with a few projects, so.
Okay, thank you. And I guess my follow-up is just regarding the flow of getting the projects completed. Is that going well? I know at times there have been projects that have taken.
It is going very well. I mean, I was negligent not to mention Jean Delios, who's our dedicated CPA administrator now with the city, who has only one job, and that job is to work on these projects. And she does a wonderful job, and we are on top, she is on top for the committee of all of these things. We're looking, making sure we're not missing anything that needs maybe an extension, and why that would happen to be, and having applicants come in to meet with us on a timely basis. All of these things are really happening very well. It's a.
Seems to be working good. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, I would, I've got a motion in a second. All in favor in terms of approving?
Aye.
Second, I guess, I as well, two to zero. So that's Order 118. So that is it for Finance and Property tonight. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1417.21]
Thank you very much. I'll call the full council back to order. And we will go to reports from committees, please. Ms. Kent.
Order number 108 from the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom referred the matter regarding a request for a budget transfer of $285,000 into the Fire Department budget to fund costs with a recently agreed MOA between the City of Beverly and the Fire Department Union, have considered said matter, and beg need to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Are there questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries six, zero.
Order number 118, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom referred the matter regarding Community Preservation Committee, 12th round CPA project funding recommendations, have considered said matter and beg need to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. I know that the subcommittee recommended these, all eight of the projects collectively. I do know that Counsel Rotundo, you need to recuse yourself from one. So I'll take these as individual votes, councilors, and that will make it so that Counsel Rotundo can vote on the others that he's able to. So let's just take them in order, as we heard them described by Mr. Beckwith. Is there a motion to approve the Abbott Street Right-of-Way Project? Any further discussion? All those in favor? That carries six, zero. Is there a motion to approve the Balch Playground renovation project? Any further discussion? All those in favor? That carries six, zero. Motion to approve the Hullcroft Park Splash Pad Project? All those in, oh, sorry, any further discussion? I'm sorry. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Carries six, zero. There a motion to approve the Gillis Park Pavilion Project? Any further discussion on that? All those in favor? That carries six, zero as well. And then the other batch under Historic Preservation, is there a motion to approve the Cabot House Porticoes Project? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Carries six, zero. Is there a motion to approve the final phase of the Beverly Cemetery Fence Project?
So moved.
Happily moved by Counsel St. Hilaire. Any further discussion on that one? All those in favor? That carries six, zero. Counsel Rotundo, you're recusing yourself from the YMCA. So, councilors, is there a motion to approve the YMCA renovation of the 10-footer Shoe Shop on Essex Street? Any further discussion? All those in favor? That one carries five, zero, with Counsel Rotundo recused. Thank you, counselor. Thank you, Mr. Perry, for bringing him back. And finally, is there a motion to approve restoration of the Rose Window at the Cabot Performing Arts Center? Any further discussion? All those in favor? That carries six, zero. So all of those projects have been approved, all six, zero, with the exception of the YMCA project, five, zero, with one Counsel recused. Thank you very much, councilors. And thanks again, Ms. Delios and also Mr. Beckwith, for being here with us this evening and for answering our questions about those.
My pleasure.
Thank you. And thanks for running down the list of the names of the whole committee, and so our thanks back to them as well for the work that they do. Ms. Kent?
Order number 143, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom referred the matter, a 7,200-student awareness grant and 2,600-senior safety grant from EOPSS and DFS to be used for public fire and life safety initiatives in our community, have considered said matter and beg need to follow. Recommend the council approve this grant.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye? That carries six, zero.
Order 142, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom referred the matter regarding a $12,500 firefighter safety equipment grant from EOPSS and DFS to be used to purchase gloves, helmets, hoods, turnout gear, and a thermal imaging for the Beverly Fire Department. Have considered said matter and beg need to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye? Carries six, zero as well.
Order number 111, the Committee on Public Services, to whom referred the matter regarding an appointment for Liz Novice Ziger, 39 Baker Ave., to serve on the Beverly Culture Council. Have considered said matter and beg need to follow. Recommend the council approve this appointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye? Carries six, zero.
Order number 112, the Committee on Public Services, to whom referred the matter regarding a reappointment for Michael Gove to serve on the Beverly Culture Council. Have considered said matter and beg need to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye? Carries six, zero.
Order number 113, the Committee on Public Services, to whom referred the matter regarding an appointment for Chelsea Turner to serve on the Beverly Culture Council. Have considered said matter and beg need to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye? That carries six, zero.
Order number 114, the Committee on Public Services, to whom referred the matter regarding an appointment for Building Commissioner James Botlet to serve on the Commission on Disabilities, have considered said matter and beg need to follow. Recommend the council approve this appointment.
Questions or comments? Counsel Bowen?
Just a comment. I often flag if there's a city employee appointed to a commission, whether or not that's part of the ordinance or an additional, like, residence space. So this is part of the ordinance that both someone from the Department of Municipal Inspections and can be also the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Inclusion and Belonging, where they're designated as city roles on the Commission on Disability because of their roles.
Thank you very much, Counsel Bowen. That's a helpful clarification for folks following. Thank you. Are there other questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye? Carries six, zero.
Order number 115, the Committee on Public Services, to whom referred the matter regarding an appointment for Wongari Fahari to serve on the Commission on Disabilities, have considered said matter and beg need to follow. Recommend the council approve this appointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye? Carries six, zero.
Order 152, the Committee on Public Services, to whom referred the matter, a reappointment for Jordan Stut to serve on the Clean Advisory, Energy Advisory Committee, have considered said matter and beg need to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye? Carries six, zero.
Order 153, the Committee on Public Services, to whom referred the matter regarding an appointment for Kira Fabrizio to serve on the Clean Energy Advisory Committee, have considered said matter and beg need to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye? Carries six, zero as well. And that was a whole, long list of folks that we were either appointing or reappointing to serve on boards and commissions in the city. And thank you to everybody who is willing to serve and keep serving. It's very important having those folks working hard in our community and for our community. We appreciate it.
Order 148, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom referred the matter regarding a renewal application for a secondhand junk dealer license for Lena Negozian Gallery at 130 Cabot Street, Unit 2, have considered said matter and beg need to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye? That carries six, zero.
Order number 149, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom referred the matter regarding renewal of a flammable storage license for North Atlantic Air Lessee at 47 LP Henderson Road, have considered said matter and beg need to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye? Carries six, zero.
Order number 150, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom referred the matter regarding a renewal application for Anwar Catabah for an ice cream truck vendor permit, have considered said matter and beg need to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye? Carries six, zero.
Order 151, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom was referred the matter, a renewal application for Steven Wright for an ice cream truck vendor permit, have considered said matter and beg need to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye? That carries six, zero as well.
Order number 154, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom referred the matter requesting a waiver of the City Ordinance, Chapter 113-2, prohibiting possession of alcohol on a public way or in public spaces, have considered said matter and beg need to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye? Carries six, zero.
Proposed amendment to Chapter 270 Vehicles and Traffic as follows. Section 270-41, parking prohibited at all times upon the following streets and highways or paths therefore, parking is hereby prohibited at all times.
Counsel Spang, there was a small addition, new language, added to this this evening. Do you want to say anything about that?
Yeah, the language this evening makes it so that the downtown parking ordinance, inclusion of Highland Ave. in there matches where you're allowed to park and not allowed to park on the different sides of Highland Ave. And it takes Highland Terrace out of the downtown parking district, because no parking is allowed on that street.
Thank you very much, Counsel Spang. So this, Order 66, was in Legal Affairs and was approved as amended with the corrected language that Counsel Spang is describing for this evening. This is a proposed ordinance change? Oh, I'm cutting you off. Sorry, Ms. Kent, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Please continue.
Section 270-48, two-hour parking. C, no person shall park a vehicle for longer than two hours on the following streets or portions of the streets. Highland Ave, north from Cabot Street, 80 feet westerly. Section 270-66, parking prohibited at all times. B, timed limited parking. Federal Street from 125 feet west of Chapman Street to Rantoul Street. Highland Ave from 90 feet west of Cabot Street to Railroad Ave, on the south side only.
Thank you. Counsel Spang, anything else that you wanted to say about this one? I know this was your ordinance. Thank you. So this is a proposed ordinance change, but it is available for a first vote this evening. And so I would entertain a motion to approve Order 66 with that slightly amended language that Counsel Spang described. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That carries six, zero. And again, that's a first vote, and so we'll have that one on our next agenda as well. Thank you, Counsel Spang, for your work on that. And that's all. All right, thank you, Ms. Kent. Councilors, are there any announcements or reminders from members of the council? All right. We do have a joint meeting with the Beverly School Committee that's coming up on Wednesday, May 7. And so just for those who are following along or want to make note of that, we'll be meeting in the Beverly High School Library, which is where we met last year with the school committee. You may remember that. Which was able to accommodate folks coming to watch a little bit better than the setup of the Beverly Middle School Library. So we'll make sure that that's on our agenda and our calendars. And with no other announcements, I will thank Kim and the Bev Cam booth again for making sure that we're live and streaming for folks. And I would... for folks, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor. That carries six, zero, and we are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.